I just want to say, Dennis, thank you very much, and I, I hope you enjoyed the rice pudding.
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Clark, are we, we ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, this is of the rules subcommittee scheduled for 5:00 PM. Mr. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Chairman Elliott?
Yeah.
Counsel Conway?
Here.
Counsel Mercy?
Yeah.
Free President.
Thank you. Let me also recognize Counsel Chow, Counsel Drinkwater, City Solicitor, City Manager, also present. So this rules subcommittee meeting is being held in response to a couple of motions that were filed, one by myself, one by Counsel Mercy, relative to two Zoom meetings that took place, one of Transportation and Public Safety Subcommittee, as well as the City Council meeting a couple of weeks ago regarding protocol and a policy that I thought was, we had in place. But with that, Madam Manager, we did receive a lengthy report from Mr. Fernandez and in your office relative to respond to two motions, one by myself and one by Counsel Mercy. So this, this meeting is being held before that, that the council meeting and that report has been forwarded to the full subcommittee. So my, my, my thought is to, you know, there are some recommendations in that report. I'm just curious how the subcommittee would like to proceed, knowing that we usually will accept the information first and then have a subcommittee meeting after. But for the moment, it's the Subcommittee Counsel Mercy and Counsel Conway, so I'll go to Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, what we are experiencing at this time is something we have never experienced before. In order to keep people safe, we have been holding our meetings by way of Zoom. We have not allowed anyone except invited department heads and anyone in city government to take part in our meetings that would explain and answer questions pertaining to previous motions and their responses. And from what I understand, it is the city manager who allows the department heads to come in, and rightfully so, rightfully so. These people were the only invited guests. In order to get into Zoom, you need the ID number and the password. We have not allowed anyone into the body that was not authorized. But yet someone, some asked to be admitted and were told no, and others were not. That's why my motion was referred to the Rules Subcommittee, and so that is the purpose why we're here today. And I did look at Mr. Fernandez's recommendations, and I find them wonderful. But I ju- I just want to give, throw something by you and see if you agree with me. I don't know. It's, it's not something that is done, but I... So this is the protocol that I should see, and I'm not an authority on this, but I did study it long and hard over the past week. Someone wants to go on Zoom, they register with the city clerk, and all appear on video, all appear on video, no calls, because I feel that some can do it, some cannot, some are given numbers. I don't have a problem with anybody and everybody coming in by way of video. The city clerk gives each speaker an ID code number to get into the meeting. No face, no speak. That's the way I see it. Name, address, city. The clerk gives them a personal ID number, and we change the password every meeting. Every meeting, we change the password. That's what I think is fair. And the reason that I'm saying this is because we wouldn't allow a person to speak at a city council meeting with a bag over their head. So why would we just allow a speaker to give a, perhaps a phony name and a phone number that belongs to somebody else, knowing that the clerk is going to call back? If someone is going to speak to me, I want to see their face. Therefore, that's fair. If anybody doesn't want to show their face, then I guess if we had a city council meeting, they wouldn't come up to the chamber because it's televised. That's what I feel is the most fairest to do. You're not disturbing anybody. Our rules say you've got to, you've got to, you're going to be admitted by way of video. We'll change the number every week. That's what, there's no, there's no problem with that. I don't know what your idea on that is, but I refer to you, Mr. Chairman. If you like the idea, I don't know, talk about it. That's what we're here for, to debate. I like to be fair. That's all I want to do, is be fair. I don't have a problem with seeing someone come up, but I have a problem with someone on speaker speaking into the phone, and, and I don't, I don't know who I'm dealing with. I don't even know if this person is, that's their name. I don't know that. But if I see their face, I can distinguish that. So that's just my opinion, for what it's worth. You want to discuss it, fine. Other than that, everything that Moran has given us, I think, is pretty good, pretty accurate. I would like to have the city solicitor weigh in on it and probably draw up things that this body decides. But I will tell you that any special guest is always at the request of the city manager. So that's my opinion right here.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Counsel Conway, did you want to weigh in before we... I did want to go to the city manager. Well, I guess we're going to talk about the report that was received. It was quite lengthy. I concur with you, Counsel Mercy, that's why I filed my motion, because the meeting prior to the city council meeting on that date, the Transportation and Public Safety, some members of the public were not treated equally, and we have to give equal access to everybody. So I concur, and, you know, the reason why there was some hesitancy from MIS at the outset or because of what they call Zoom bombing, where you have people that are allowed to participate by video that's broadcast over our table to all our residents, you know, did some very bad things. That's the only way that I can do it, explain it with pornography and such. So, and unfortunately, even as recently as a couple of weeks ago, the same thing happened. Limits there, where the school committee had to literally stop the meeting because of, you know, individuals that were allowed to participate with video, doing things that were completely inappropriate that were broadcast. So I agree. I don't know what the answer is, other than, you know, hopefully we'll be back into the chamber soon, but I do think we have to put a policy in place if, you know, for some unforeseen reason in the future, we have to revert back to Zoom. So I know Counsel Conway has his hand up, so why don't I go to you, Counsel Conway, and then we'll talk about the policy, what's the place, and what we can do moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, excuse me, I can concur with Counsel Mercy on this. The, the thing that kind of confused me a little bit in the last week, because again, I'm not, about two weeks ago, I'm not an expert on this, but when I, when I saw a couple individuals on the Zoom, that I really, I had no idea who they were, and yet I couldn't see my colleague, which kind of confused me. I didn't understand why somebody was sitting there for a lengthy period of time, and I think it was, actually, I think it was Counsel Mercy and Counsel Elliott I couldn't see, which I didn't know whether they left the meeting or not. And I think that whatever we do, whatever we set up, just the way that Counsel Mercy described this, is that once that person is finished, that person is out and not, and not sitting there as part of the meeting. And that's what happened two weeks ago, and that, to be quite frankly, was very disrespectful, and that can't, that can't happen, and it shouldn't happen at all. I think that when we go over, excuse me, some of the, some of the rules and regulations, which I think are pretty simple, when I, when I took a look at them, and I, I won't, I won't spend much time on this, but just very quickly, I mean, when somebody calls the clerk, you know, I would think that whoever takes that telephone call at the clerk's office should first of all get their name and their address, and talk about, just very briefly, it only takes a minute, just to say, listen, you have five minutes to speak. If I were you, I'd prepare it. We need respect, we need respectful language. You need to state your name and your address, and again, there's nothing personal. And also, I think going forward too, is the fact that I think it's important, and we should set this up somehow. I'm not sure how, and I think that's one of the reasons why I have the meeting tonight, is that when it gets to be four and a half minutes, just like we do when we're running for office, that somebody says, okay, you've got 30 seconds left, so that the mayor is not saying quickly, by the way, your five minutes are up, that's it. So if you have that 30 seconds to say, listen, I think you need to wrap up your thought because your five minutes are up, I think that's extremely important. And I think that, you know, again, I'm, I'm just going to just make a quick, a quick comment here, and then I, I'll certainly look forward to what the city manager says. I think going forward, you know, we need to, as Counsel Elliott said, respect everyone's opinion and treat, and it's important to treat everyone equal. And, you know, that equal coin, should we say, goes both ways. And too often, we have individuals, and it was brought up, you know, as far as I'm concerned, someone being very disrespectful to one of our colleagues. And it's, too often, we have a small disgruntled group of people that creatures tolerance all the time, but yet they are the least tolerant. So I think that, again, going forward, it, it, it's clear that, that we have to be very careful, and again, very respectful, and fear the way we, the way we set this up, so that everyone has equal access to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Conway. Other members of the council want to weigh in before I'd like to approach the city manager and talk about this. Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do have a question, so I don't know if you want me to ask a question now or wait till Madam City Manager speak?
Whatever, whatever, it's fine. Let's go with the questions, yeah?
Okay, sure. And I appreciate Moran and City Manager's report on the rules. It's very detailed and informative, and as the statement in the report say, it is fluid, because, you know, we jump from live meeting to auto meeting, and then to video meeting. And I know that we had some issue just among the council. The first couple of video meetings, there's some glitches and so forth. And I know that we're trying to do our best to make it as smooth as possible. And my question is more related to, you know, trying to improve the meeting going forward, and Counsel Mercy mentioned a couple of things already, like changing the password after each meeting and so forth. But my question is, when we have issues affecting the residents and the city, and when we have so many registered speakers, are there criteria that you have to be a low resident to speak? Or what kind of criteria do we want for people to speak through Zoom and through video? Or audio, if that matters?
Madam Manager, the Solicitor, we do have rules. Is this covered under rules? We needed, we should have suspended rules for that because...
If I may, there is, there is a rule that who's allowed to speak in the chamber at the meetings. I'm going to find it. Hang on. But it's low residents, basically, are someone represented by an attorney of a low business. I think it's Rule 26. Citizens and employers of the city, business owners or council who represent each group, show up, opportunity to be heard. It's Rule 26. So there are limits in accordance to our council rules.
So employees of the city, is that mean employees of the city government organization? Or employees of any organization in the city?
I think it's employee city.
Can I go to the Solicitor or the City Manager, one of the two together? I mean, typically, I think we've been very flexible. I think we understand that low city council meetings, and at this level, people, you know, we allow them to express themselves. I'm not so sure that we, as a wellies, are afforded the same rights in other communities, but that's okay. As long as I've been on, we've been, we've been understanding. We understand they play a role. However, we do have, we do have Rule 26. And Madam Solicitor, can, can you clarify that? I mean, because we all adopt these rules on day one when we're sworn in.
Sure. So the council did adopt that rule. I believe that there is, the rule does allow for, if there was somebody that does not fall into that category, but nevertheless wants to, seeks to come before the council with a presentation of some, some sort, or to speak on an issue, which happens sometimes, experts from outside an area on a, a various, one of the various public issues. The, the council can then suspend that rule and let the person speak. And that has happened, in fact, numerous times. In fact, I really can't think of an, an occasion when somebody was, was not allowed to speak.
Counsel Chow, I'll set.
Just, just one more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when they are allowed to be a registered speaker, once they are accepted and connected to speak in the meeting, and when they're done, and I know in the report, sometimes the, says the speaker can mute or disconnect themselves, or the clerk can mute or disconnect the speaker. What criteria do, does the clerk use that to disconnect the speaker? For example, what if the speaker would like to finish staying on the line, even just to listen to what other response might be, either from another speaker, from the city council? Are there criteria for disconnecting the speaker?
Yeah, I think that's part of the policy, Counsel Chow, that we need to perhaps clarify or be a little bit more specific on. Because the practice up to, I think 13 to 14 weeks, I have to say, I thought it worked well. From the outset, there was, as I mentioned, there was concern with people using the video option, which is a concern across the, you know, across the country, in an inappropriate fashion. However, I think that we've been very good in allowing people to participate by audio and still protecting the viewers, quite frankly. But when it comes down to letting, allowing people to stay online, I, I think we'll have to address that, and, and of course, they can, they can listen to it on live TV when it's streamed. Presumably, they're, they're watching at the same time, but that'll be, have to be something to, that needs to be sorted out, I suppose, as if it's, you know, a very hot topic, or a lot of people want to participate. There could be concerns, as it was placed the other night, I think, with the website, where people tuned in. I'm not sure if it's Zoom related or not, but the site crashed. So I don't know, you know, to me, similarly to a council meeting, if people come up and they speak at the podium, and then we're done, they go and sit down, they can listen to the rest of the meeting. This is a little bit different if, if they're not next to, you know, like, if they're not next to a television, I suppose, but I, I think it's a good question. I don't know, Madam Manager, if you have an answer to that?
Thank you, Counsel. I think that is one of the questions for the Subcommittee and the council to, to address. You know, the, as you say, in, in a regular council meeting, someone can speak, and then when they finish, they're done, and then they sit down. They can listen to the council meeting. It's a little bit different with the technology, having people hang on, I don't mean hang on, but, you know, staying on when they're done. They still have access. Well, it seems they had access to a microphone, which they wouldn't if it were in the chamber, and I think that was one of the issues. So I think that's one thing for the council to decide. Should they be, you know, disconnected once they've finished, and either watch on television, or they certainly can access it online? And if they're on a computer to begin with, presumably, they have access to, to being online if they spoke, you know, via Zoom. So I, I think that's probably one of the, one of the determinations the Subcommittee should, should decide. The Subcommittee could certainly decide that, you know, the ordinary course would be, people would be disconnected, unless there was a reason to keep them online, unless they wanted to stay on because they may need to speak again, or there may be further questions, something along that line.
No, I, I agree. I think that makes sense, I think, considering what we, what I thought was the process in the past, including at the Transportation Subcommittee. When people are, are finished with, you know, their remarks, then I think it's in the best interest of everybody that, that once they're done, that they certainly can listen by other means and technology, but as far as the Zoom call is concerned, they should be disconnected. And, and one of the reasons why I bring this forward is because of a comment that was made by an individual who is still connected relative to Counsel Mercy. Extremely inappropriate, and I, I think for that reason alone, not to interrupt the public discourse of business, that, you know, that people should be disconnected after. And I'd actually make that in the form of a motion, once we move forward with policy, that once people have concluded their remarks, that they, you know, that they finished their statement, and then they're disconnected from...
I'll second that.
So, okay, motion by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Conway. Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Free President.
Okay, so why don't we, you know, speaking of the policy, Madam Manager, do you want to talk about the policy that will be, you know, the report that will be brought to the city council tomorrow night? Any, anything I...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the report that the Chief Information Officer prepared, you know, three pages of just his respectful suggestions, it's entirely up to the council, how the council wants to conduct its business, obviously, and Zoom being the, the current mode that we're using. And, and as has been stated, there is, there's details that have been laid out, which, which we believe are reasonable, and steps that are reasonable. You will note, though, in his recommendation, he is talking about telephone versus video, and that's, again, up to the council, as far as, if the council wants to have the public on video, it's totally, that would be changed in, in the ultimate final draft. But that, again, with, with precautions and protocols to protect as much as possible between one meeting to the next, and that's the changing of the password and the like. The only point I would make on that is, the council may want to consider leaving telephone access available, because there could be a situation where the speaker doesn't have a computer but has a telephone and wants to speak on something. And I don't know who that is. I'm just saying that it, it's possible. We wouldn't want to deny someone if they wanted to register to speak on something, and they only have telephone access. So, but that's, again, up to the council.
Counsel Mercy, did you have a...
Yeah, yes. Moran did give us an outline, and on his number 4A, he talked about while the Zoom meeting ID may remain the same, the meeting password could change for each meeting prior to emailing the meeting details out. I firmly believe that. We could change the password every time. As far as video, I think it should be video for everybody. It should be video. I don't even know why we would make an exception with that, because that person could be the person that does horrible things. I mean, I believe that when people call up the city clerk and say they want to be on, we let them know it's by video. We need their name, address, city, and this, and the phone number, and we, and the city clerk gives them an ID number. That ID number is associated with the person that's speaking. That's as simple as that, in my opinion, and I would make the motion that that happens. I don't know too many people that don't have a computer today. When you have a city council meeting, maybe someone can't come, what are we going to have? Them call in? I don't buy it. I, I know that. I understand that, but it's either all or nothing. We all do the same thing, or we don't. It's like saying, you know, I know you're bashful, you don't want to speak, but you can speak from out in the hallway. We'll bring you a microphone. You know, I don't, I don't get it, but that's just completely my suggestion, and I would make it in the form of a motion to allow everybody come in by video. We wouldn't have a person come to the city council with a bag over their head, or wearing a mask, but we shouldn't do that with this Zoom meeting.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Mercy, seconded by Counsel Conway.
Mr. Chairman, on the motion?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Just want to make a brief comment. Just as an example of somebody who actually wants to engage in a public meeting, but might not have access to Zoom. I've actually been down at literally fields where people are there with their kids, and have taken, you know, walked away to actually call into a, a public meeting. Now, I know if we were actually meeting in the chambers, they would have no choice but to, to go and appear in person, be able to, to register to speak. But I think there is something to be said for the fact that certain members of the public who may be committed elsewhere because of, you know, a commitment with their child or something else, have actually been able to call in. and engage, um, in certain public meetings by phone. Um, so I, I think just something to, to consider on that note, to make sure it's equitable, uh, to people, whether it is that they don't have a computer or maybe they just can't be near a computer when they want to speak. Um, it actually is a way to sort of make, uh, public participation a little bit more equitable.
Sure.
I, I don't support that, no, I don't. It's another way of discriminating by what, either all or nothing. That's the way I see it. It's no different than the city council chamber. I'm rather embarrassed to speak. Could I, um, talk from the outside in the hall? Come on now, let's be serious. That's my opinion, you either support it or you don't, I'm just suggesting it, that's all.
Well, um, I follow you, Council Mercy, but we also have, we have Mr. Gary and MIS and they're just, they're just speaking, so. We need to get that picture up. Uh, Council Conway on the motion, anything else?
I'm all set. Seconded.
Um, so, um, Council Mercy, your, your, your motion is just only video and people will not be allowed to call in?
Well, do they call into a city council meeting? Do they not have a, there are people that don't have transportation to the city council meeting. Do we then provide a cab for them to come up? Come on, we could go on and on and on like this.
Sure.
It's my opinion, I don't know, you don't have to agree with it, but that's the way I see it.
Well, hopefully we'll be back, uh, in the city council chamber soon, um, as well. So, um, all those in favor of the motion signified by Saya and I, or, or, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. So it'll be clear over the Zoom.
Chairman Elliot?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Three A's.
Three A's, um, onto the policy, anything else you want to add? I mean, I do think it's, um, I do think it's comprehensive and quite frankly, it's, it's worked up to that, up to a, a council meeting, um, you know, two council meetings ago, it's worked perfectly fine. Um, so I think it's, we have adopted rules that are consistent, they're, um, fair, they're going to be applied, um, across, across the board. Um, so I, I, I thought, I actually thought we did adopt the policy that there was not going to be any, any video, um, um, which, you know, apparently not. I do think we all need to be cautious, anything else that, uh, any other members of the council want to talk about?
Yeah, I have one. Yes, I have one last request here. You know that each one of us, if you look at the grid, you see everybody's name here, do you not? I believe that anybody that calls in and wants to get on TV, they should have their name on it so we can see it.
Sure.
It's very easy to do. I'm not computer literate, I'm, I'm the dumbest person on the council when it comes to this. But as you could see, I found a way to put my name there, so I don't know how difficult that really is. Because when you?
When you sign, when you sign in, my, um, you have to type your name underneath the?
There you go, yes.
I'm almost certain, I'm almost certain. Okay, so I think moving forward, Madam Manager, Mr. Clerk, uh, and others, will need to, will need to see your face, um, at these meetings. I think that's what the policy is, uh, that we just adopted. So I, I did have just a couple of questions for you, Madam Manager, regarding the report. Um, as I understand it, there is only one host. And that individual is the person that presses the button that allows people in, correct? I just want to, I just want to make that clear.
That's my understanding, Council.
Okay, so there's one person, um, in the report, Mr. Fernandez, did they, did the majority of them? Is there somebody else that, um, that ran the meetings or they're running the school committee meetings or?
Uh, the school committee is different. Uh, I, I think Mary Sheen may run the school committee meetings. I don't know if that's all of them. Um, I think, um, Nick Navin may have run either a subcommittee or, or a, someone else from MIS. But primarily, it's been Mr. Fernandez.
All right, good. And this waiting room, um, this is for my own edification, so when, when I call in and they ask, do you want to be joined by video? Do you want to be joined by audio? And I say, yes, yes, then I'm put into a sort of whole pattern that, that's the waiting room where, and, and my thought is this will be kind of a clearinghouse to make sure that those that are registered, that are going to speak and are on video are actually the, the, the individual. And we're not going to know everybody, but at least that's sort of a, you know, as it says, a waiting room for the clerk or whoever the host is to make sure that the person that is speaking is a person that is being on video.
Yeah, and, and again, my understanding, Council, is that, um, the, uh, the host will let the speakers in from the waiting room in a sequential order of the order that they registered to speak.
Yep.
So that it's one person speaking at a time, just like we do in the council chamber. And you don't have multiple people in, uh, having the opportunity to speak. It's, it's one person and they, they are let in by the host of the meeting, uh, from the waiting room when their, their, uh, time, their turn comes up.
Makes sense. Okay. Council Conway?
Just, uh, through you to the city manager, just for, just a point of clarification. Uh, as far as that waiting room is concerned, uh, is there, and, and as you said, you, you wait for the host to, to let you in. Does there any, is there anybody else that sees individuals that are in the waiting room? Besides the host?
Uh, not to my knowledge. I think it's simply the host has, in this case, obviously, the, uh, individuals would have to register in advance to speak like they do at the city council meeting with their name and address and phone number. And so the, the clerk's office would certainly have a list of whoever has registered to speak, just as we always do in terms of conduct of the meetings. Uh, but then as far as when they actually have been given access to the waiting room, I think it's just the host that will know who's in the waiting room and, and the list that the clerk will have generated.
I thank you.
Good, thank you. Um, Council Mercy, in your motion, um, it was for the city manager to provide an answer to why some were let, some were let into the Zoom meeting and others were, were, were told, no, are you satisfied with, um, you know, with the response on that?
Yes, but I'm not commenting on it here. I'll wait till the city council meeting and I'll comment on it tomorrow.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Anything else? Um, Council Chow, Council Drinkwater? No? Council Drinkwater?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm all set. Uh, we'll defer my comments on the second, uh, part of the motion response until tomorrow.
Uh, a- as far as I'm concerned, we've, um, we've, my motion was, um, was to get the report and we discussed the report. Seems like there'll be a further discussion of this, um, tomorrow. Um, I think that we're wanting to keep, keep in place and perhaps expand a little bit the protocol that has been in place since, uh, the be- beginning of, um, Zoom sessions. Uh, plans are to go back into regular sessions September first. Um, so with that, uh, we talked about the policy, we talked about credentials, we talked about, um, um, other things. I, I don't have anything further, um, particularly important, Madam Manager, Council Mercy?
Yes, one last thing, um, it, why is Moran Fernandez not here tonight?
Yes.
Is there?
Uh, I, I, he, he may be here, Council, doing the, the meeting.
Would he be, would he be available tomorrow night at the city council meeting? Cause if anyone says anything, I'd like him to be available to defend himself and I want to hear the truth. I want to hear if, I want to hear what's happening. And I don't, it would be fair if one person says one thing and the person that they're referring to is probab- could we have Nick Navin handle something so that when the time comes for this particular issue, he's available to speak for himself?
Madam Manager, okay with that?
Counselor, I, certainly, uh, Madam Solicitor?
Thank you. The, um, Manager Donahue, the, um, uh, as far as having employees available, uh, to answer questions, yes, they can, uh, they can certainly be available to, to answer questions. Um, I think one thing that I would want to, um, caution everyone about is the report and the information that was requested from the manager was fairly straightforward. Um, namely, who, uh, makes the decision to let people in? Who makes the decision to, uh, cut people off? And that information was provided by the, uh, by the department and the individual who has been doing that. Um, however, uh, we do have a, um, an actual complaint from a resident. And so I think we just need to be cautious as the, um, as the council and, and everyone moves forward, uh, on this issue that, uh, now that you have received the information, depending on what next steps the council wants to, to take, if any, um, the, um, we would have to be mindful of a, of a complaint. Uh, there are times where we might need to go into executive session. And there are times when individuals, uh, when investigating complaints need to be given written notice that they themselves, um, may need to be, be prepared, they would have the right to counsel and, and things of that, um, nature. So, um, I suppose one step at a time, but I just wanted to lay that out because those issues, um, possibly could come into play in this particular matter.
Council Mercy?
Well, I just think it would be fair if Moran is here.
Un- understood.
Okay, well, well, he'll, he'll be available, but if it gets into a, Madam Solicitor, you'll be, you'll be on the call. I mean, you'll be on the meeting and ensure that if we, if the conversation stays in an area then, we're going to make sure we take the appropriate course of action. Council Conway?
Yeah, just, uh, again, just to caution us, uh, the executive session meeting, uh, what happens to those people that are in the waiting room? Are we, uh, is it, is it perfectly clear that they will not somehow be able to, uh, whether it's by mistake or whatever, uh, be let into that executive session? Is, there is a way that that will be, they will not be obviously put into that? Is that correct? I, what I don't want to see happen is we go into executive session and all of a sudden, we're scratching our head and saying, well, I don't know how this person got in and I don't know how that person got in before you know it becomes a bit of a debacle. So I want to, I would just want to caution all of us that we're prepared, if we have to go into executive session, that it is through the executive session. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think, you know, should there be an executive session, it has to be posted. We, we won't be going immediately, um, tomorrow night.
Right.
Um, anything else? Okay, we'll bring this, um, uh, motion to, uh, bring this forward as a report of progress by Council Conway, seconded by Council Mercy, all those in favor signify by sayan aye. And opposed, opposed, we'll bring this information forward, um, with, uh, the two motions that were adopted for recommendation, uh, and submission to the city council tomorrow night. And, um, seemingly will be a longer discussion about this, so, um, um, I think this meeting can conclude. Anything else, Madam Manager, Solicitor?
Nothing else.
Nothing?
Chairman.
Okay, Councilor, no, okay. Uh, motion to adjourn by Council Mercy, seconded by Council Conway, all those in favor signify by sayan aye. Those opposed, the motion carries, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.